All right, sounds good. We'll go ahead and call this board meeting to order. Welcome, it is May 11th, 2020, 7:00 PM. We have all seven board members present. We'll go ahead and get started and we have the agenda to start first. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Madam President, I would like to add a topic to the discussion tonight.
And what do you want to add, Chris?
Just, I had talked to Dr. Cobb's to discuss money and finances and where our budget, just spending money because I don't want us, I've heard Susan talk of the horror stories of '08, '09, and '10, and I just think as a group collectively, we should discuss spending going forward. I know we're in a good spot now and I don't think that we would be in a bad spot, but I just think we need to have a deeper discussion about how we want to do our spending going forward.
Okay, so Dr. Cobb's, would you be comfortable with doing a little funding update question answer type thing for us if we added that in?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second to Chris's motion?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote if you want to add that. Linda Alderman, yes or no?
Maybe, just because I think a budget discussion would take longer than perhaps what we have tonight, so does maybe count?
A yes or a no?
I'd like to have a budget discussion done later when we have more time, but if this is something Chris wants, I'll say yes.
Okay, thank you Linda. Chris?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, I will say yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Sure, yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 7-0 to add that to the agenda, and I'm not sure that I included the approval of the agenda in that statement, so is there a motion?
I'm hoping to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Harold. Was that second by Melidia?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, you are great. You're a little bit on delay on my screen for some reason, so I just wanted to make sure. All right, and we will just go ahead and do a group vote on this, all in favor of approving that agenda, please say yes.
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 Opposed? Alrighty, that passes 7-0, and we can move on into the consent agenda. Dr. Cobb's?
Yeah, the consent agenda is fairly, fairly basic for the most part, I think there are some things on there, but just so you know, the OPA invoice, the basis contract, the lunch contract, and the IDEA assurances are all normal items that would be on the consent agenda, there are annual updates that we have to do. The one that, there are two that I wanted to touch based on the Clorox 360 machines or those disinfectant machines that we talked about last time, those are on there for purchase as they're currently on back order, so the quicker that we can get them ordered, the better off we'll be. And the other one that showed up is 3.10, if you saw earlier in the week, it was still listed as new agenda item, so I went in and I updated it today, I don't know why it didn't save appropriately, but ultimately with the change here in, in the office with the resignation of one of our employees, this ultimately means that I need to be able to sign checks. I should be able to sign them anyways, but this is just one of those things that allows me to be a signer of checks, which is ultimately what 3.10 is.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I got one question on 3.06. Dr. Cobb's, if we, on the basis contract, if we for whatever reason stay on a online platform, would they just refund us or credit that over to the following year if we don't use any of those services?
I'll be honest with you, what I think that they'll wind up doing, and Josh can help me here, is that they will help us figure out a way to provide services in a different platform for those students. We would still be able to utilize those services for those.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure that, you know, if we didn't use them, if that rolls over, how that works.
I think we will use them more so this year than maybe we have in the past.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Julie.
That's all right. I think someone made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I did.
Was that Susan? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And we will just do a group vote, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
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 Opposed? All right, and that passes 7-0. And that, we do not have any comments from the public tonight. We'll go ahead and move on to section five, and I think we'll go ahead and add that funding discussion here first before we get into the rest of the items that are up. So, Dr. Cobb's, you want to give us a little update on funding or share what it is you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, and we'll get into Q and A, but I think that there are maybe some things that we need to understand about how school funding works, and probably a good opportunity for us to have a broader discussion about funding with the public, but ultimately, our budget is determined year by year from the state, and that is based off of the base state aid per pupil, which is a multiplier times the number of students that we have, and we all, I think, understand the complexities of the, the school funding formula and why it's not one of the most appreciated things across the state of Kansas. But, but one of the things that happens within that budget is that that money is zeroed out every year, so we, we can budget to place within contingencies, but we need to budget those things to place in contingencies, and you can't just save money and hide it in certain places. Once you maneuver money, and let's say that we identify that we're going to put this amount of money within textbooks, and we can, that textbook money can roll over year to year because it's, it's no longer necessarily in the same general fund, but once you put it into textbooks, you can't bring it out of textbooks. It's stuck there and you'd have to utilize that money for textbooks at that point in time. So, the, the, the idea behind a, a school budget from, from KSPE and KASP and from our legislature in general is that they've given us enough money to what they believe to operate in, in a particular capacity over the course of the year, and it's expected that those monies are spent down at the end of every year. Any money that you do not spend down, they may allow you to keep, but they will draw off the top of your next year's budget. So, let's just say if you didn't spend $500,000, I believe that the neck, that the way that works, I'll look at Terry who's gonna, who's gonna look at me, but I believe the way that it works is that in your next fiscal year, they will reduce your fund by that $500,000. The, the purpose behind that is that they don't want schools to hoard money that way, that they give you an amount of money that they identify as being a purposeful for the education of kids over the course of a year, and that it's expected to be expended in that way. We do have the opportunity for contingency funds, and we do have healthy contingency funds at this point, which is something that Terry in this district has worked very hard over the course of the years. Susan shaking her head, because we get into situations like we're in now in which funding is, is questionable, and we need to have some, some resources that would allow us to stay the course and, and overcome some of those adversities that come our way. The, the other part of this that will, will come up later tonight is the difference between your general fund and your, and your capital funds. So, one of the things with your contingencies and your capital funds is that when we do our budget workshop every year, Dale Dennis will identify what our contingency reserves are and what our capital balances are, and even though it's not explicitly stated that you can only have a particular percentage, they watch that and monitor it very closely that we don't go over certain percentages of our, of our general fund to make sure that we don't have contingencies larger than what we should have based upon what our general fund is. Our capital budget is, is similar, only different, in that our capital budget can only be spent on the maintenance and upkeep of facilities. So, there's some different ways that that can happen, but you can't use your capital dollars to offset costs in other areas, so you couldn't use it to pay teacher salaries and those types of things. It can only be allocated to the maintenance and the upkeep of your, of your facilities or the improvement of facilities. So, that's kind of a, a very small overview of the budget, we could talk about budget for two hours, but I know that there are real questions, and I know that Chris has questions, other people may have questions, but for those people sitting out there listening, and maybe for those of you on the board that didn't really know how it all works, the budget is a year-to-year cycle, and, and it is expected that we zero out that budget every year, and, and what is happening next year i- is still up in the air, not a lot of us know exactly what's going to happen next year, but if, if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them.
So, Dr. Cobb's, I guess my question by what you just ended on would be, since we don't know really what next year's going to look like, I guess part of my question would be, when would we have to spend down some of this money, especially some of the things we're talking about tonight has to do with spending money out of different pots? Is there a reason to not like wait and see how some of this is going to go before we make some of these spending decisions now, I guess is?
Well, I think we can address that, the areas in which we're, we're spending, so from a, from a curriculum resource, th- these dollars are coming out of our textbooks, textbook funds anyways, so you, we can only spend textbook funds on textbook funds, so not spending on textbook funds doesn't really give us any more latitude within our budget. From, from a capital standpoint, again, really the, the only thing at this point we're, we're doing by, by delaying or choosing not to, to spend funds at this point in time is just putting them off for, for a better time, and, and I don't know who gets to determine when the better time is. So, there's a great deal of uncertainty at this point, but the uncertainty is coming within the general fund, not necessarily in the funds in which we're, we're trying to allocate dollars from at this point. So, I thi- I think it's important to recognize, Chris, what, what you're talking about though, and these are conversations that are having, that we're having with Terry and we're having with, with all of our building principals, that we have to be very conscious of what we're spending out of the general fund at this point moving forward and making good decisions about what we are going to spend those dollars on, and, and not being, and I would say that we're never careless with dollars, but being even more purposeful in, in how we allocate dollars and resources to, to the things that we need. You know, an example would be that we don't necessarily know what classrooms are going to look like next year, but we already had, we already went through the process in which, which teachers identified their materials for classrooms, but the vast majority of our teachers recognized they need to be a little more conservative about what those things were and, and did a great job of, of trying to determine what, what they needed for their classrooms, given what that classroom was going to look like next year. So, a lot of those things are already beginning to happen in terms of, of how we utilize resources. I think that just comes down to trust of our administrators who, who approve those, those requisitions to make sure that those are things that we really need for our classrooms moving forward.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's...
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I guess, I understand the curriculum discussion you were brought up on the, the different, I guess, budgets.
Right.
Um, I guess one to use for example is not knowing what next year's going to be like, what, how we're going to start school, I guess one of my examples would be like, you just hit pause on, say this year, let's use buses for example, and we just hit pause on a bus for right now, does that kill us? I know we're still going to spend the money, but you're either spending now or later, I guess is the argument to that.
Yeah, and, and that's what it comes down to, is, is you got to make a decision about when the right time to, to purchase these things are. What we, what we want to make sure is that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we get behind, you know, for instance, we, we don't want to have this discussion with like Chromebooks, right, so I, I see buses kind of in the, in the same thing, but we don't want to wait a year and then have our resources behind a year in, in terms of the, the rollout that we have for them, and I, I think it's the same when we start talking about buses. The, the plan that we put in place to purchase buses was to purchase one a year, I think we got two more years of, of purchasing, of purchasing a bus, and, and certainly we could get by without it, but then it changes the, the entirety of the plan. The, the, the thing that I think we have to consider there is, from a capital standpoint, which is what we would utilize to purchase those buses, does saving that money in our capital really impact our general fund, which is, which is really where we, we, we start talking about dollars and, and spending, because that's where we get into teacher salaries, personnel, support staff, all of those things, and, and that's, that's the impact of the budget. The, the capital budget and what we might spend on a bus, again, has little to no impact upon that in the long run. So, there's some real differences between, between identifying expenditures coming out of capital and identifying expenditures coming out of general fund, and that's not to say that it's okay to spend out of one and not the other, but I think it's important for us to recognize that just saving money and capital is not going to give us flexibility in the general fund.
Oh, I totally understand that.
Yeah, and, and we will be dinged if we have too much money in capital outlet. Our, our general fund will be dinged, won't hurt.
It, it's certainly going to be up for discussion if we have too much money in capital outlet. I don't know that there's a, a great big penalty that goes along with it, but Dale Dennis has an interesting way of making sure that everybody knows that we're different.
Okay, but I do have a question. On those capital funds, they can roll forward, don't have to be spent down, correct?
That's correct.
What is the history over the last 10 years? I mean, do you have like an average of what we've left in there?
Yep, I think, I think over the course of time, we've always tried to have $2 million in our capital budget.
Yeah, and, and we want to have that policy going forward.
Yes.
What's our current balance?
Yeah, uh, next year, I think Terry told me we're like over $3 million.
Right. So...
What are we at now, though?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna see... Yeah, we have it, we have, Terry just said that we have a tax payment coming in June, and once that's paid, we'll still be over $3 million.
Okay.
And isn't there, I thought there was a percentage of what your capital could be up to?
There's a percentage of your contingency that they want to keep you, I don't, again, I don't think it's definitive, because of the, the, the different expectations of budgets across the state and, and how, how different districts are allocated dollars and, and some of them more and some of them less, but they've always indicated that, that, that we should be somewhere around 15%, I think, in our contingency funds, is that right? And I think it's about 15% that we have the ability to, to maintain in our contingencies. When, if you get too far over that, that, that is when then Dale Dennis gives you the call and says, what are you doing? You need to, you need to spend down, and we were there two years ago as we were going through this bond and, and being told, you've got to spend down some of your contingency dollars.
Plus, another point that I think is being perhaps ignored is that we have a very definitive five-year plan that, that has been made up by Darrell mostly for, for maintenance and for the buses, bus purchases, and I think we would be remiss if we deviated from that five-year plan, just because we have, I know Susan remembers, in years past, we have been chastised by the community for not, you know, taking care of buildings, painting buildings, doing maintenance, which is needed, and that's what this capital outlet fund is for.
And, and I think it's important to, to recognize that when our community did our, our district a huge service bypassing a bond issue, and our buildings are in great shape, and we've got, we've got new to almost new roofs on every building, we've got new to almost new HVAC systems in every building, we, I mean, we, our, our infrastructure of, of what's going on with, with our, with our, with our buildings for students is in really, really good shape. So, these things that we have within, within our capital, you know, as we start talking about track is probably the last great expenditure out of capital that we're going to see for a number of years, because we, we, we should just have maintenance and upkeep for the next four or five years into six or seven years because of the new buildings across our district. So, we should see some flexibility in that capital budget as we move forward because we shouldn't have large scale, I say we shouldn't, I'm knocking on wood as we say this, because that, lots of things happen over the course of time, but when you look at that five-year plan, a lot of those big, those big ticket items begin to come off of it because we have our, we have our buildings. The, the biggest one after track is, is most likely asphalt across the, across the way, and, and honestly, we- Um, and and honestly, we had a great deal from kilo construction this year, we didn't spend a a huge amount of money on asphalt under budget from where we said. And I think we can continue that um, a- as we as we move forward, taking care of our our facilities.
And with the current budget crisis that is going to be coming, though, will that affect how much money we are going to be getting to replenish? Into our capital fund?
Yes, to some extent, yes.
So if we spin them down, we won't be able to necessarily fill them up the way that we have been able to.
I don't know that that's, a lot of that will be dependent upon assessed evaluation, so. Um, you're gonna have to see property taxes go down quite a bit in order for that to really impact our our capital budget. But but that's when we begin to have the conversations about about what Chris said and and making decisions. Um, maybe not now when we don't know those things are happening. Um, but but recognizing that we do have some flexibility in our current budget. And if we get to the point in which we have to make some decisions, then we make those decisions as they come along. And maybe that's when we don't purchase the bus, or maybe that's when we do some some different things, but. Our capital expenditures will be vastly reduced over the course of the next two and three years. Anyways, even if we do see a reduction in in capital dollars coming in.
I guess the whole reason I brought this discussion up was just. We see unemployment rates, um, I think you even Dr. Cobbs has said that we may see something north of 20% just here in our community. And I think because of of a because us as a district and past board members and administration has done a good job. And been a good steward of all these different pots of money, we are in a good shape, it's just. For me, maybe this is just me personally, it's hard to keep spending money when so many people are struggling.
And Chris, I think you make a good point, I also think that we need to to recognize that 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 our role here is to make sure that we provide for our students. Um, at the at the highest level that we can. And part of that is the main maintenance of our facilities and making sure that that those facilities are up to par with where we expect them to be. Um, and and if we talk specifically about the track, I mean, some of you have gone and and seen what's going on at our track, and certainly there are issues. That are going on with it, um, and issues that if we continue to put off, only only continue to grow. Um, when we have the opportunity to do some of those things, it it does make sense to do them. Uh, when we can do them and make sure that we take care of our students moving forward. But again, the this board gets to make uh, gets to make those decisions, and ultimately that will be a decision that that you have to come up with specifically to the. To the track as we get to that that agenda item and and identify different options that are available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cobbs, are there any other questions for Dr. Cobbs before we move on to our next topic? Sorry, I think I'm back on now, um, we will move on to uh, what was 5.01, I guess now it's. Part two, OHS Track, Dr. Cobbs, you want to give us the options for track at OHS, and we, this is an action item tonight.
Yeah, so um, you have formal opportunities for discussion and and if you want to, if you want to make a. A motion for the for the track, and again, um, the opportunity exists for us to do something. Um, while we're while we're addressing the turf, to have some consistency across the board. Um, and and make sure that we take care of our stadium and and have something great for our kids when we when we are able to to return to to a more normal. Uh, situation and utilize the facility, but. Those of you that went and and viewed the track. Um, you you saw that there are some fairly significant tracks from about the the midpoint of the bleachers, stadium bleachers. All the way around past the the jump pit, and you also saw that where we have done. Um, the the filling, the rubber fill, uh, that those those repairs have not lasted for very long, and they're beginning to crack so far. Um, that you can actually fit your hand down down into those spaces, the jump pit itself is. Um, is probably a wash at this point, there there are cracks all through it and the. The rubber matting is actually beginning to to peel up and and certainly not a great surface. So we had, we had two different groups come in and and take a look at the track, one was from United who. Uh, did their repairs on the track the the last time. And they they provided two two different options, one was to simply fill the cracks. At about a $4,500 bill, the other was $92,000 to um. To take to redo the the jump pit area and and resurface the entire track. I I would just tell you that that both of the options from from Mid-America and from United to do the jump pit and resurface the track. It would be would be my recommendation to this board tonight, even consider. Neither one of them addressed the issues that are creating the cracking in in the track to begin with. And and the whole purpose of the previous conversation was. To ensure that we were being very conscientious about how we spend our money and making sure that we're making good decisions about utilizing taxpayer dollars. Either one of the options, whether the $92,000 option from United or the $98,000, I think from Mid-America. Neither of those solve the track issue, which means that in three or four years, we're going to spend. Another $400,000 to completely redo the track when it hits its end of life. So it would, in essence, just be a $100,000 Band-Aid. Um, and I don't think that that is a the the best utilization of our of our dollars there. The the other options from from Mid-America, um, and again, we we had the conversation about. Um, either just repairing the cracks or because we had Mid-America working on the turf there, they do. Uh, we could do a change order to address this issue. And 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 have the same company hold the warranty on the track and 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 the turf. Not mess up the turf while they're working on the track and not having two different companies that we had to that we had to work through there. Um, but again, the the first options from from Mid-America would be ones that that I would, I would recommend against. Um, that it's a 90, basically a $98, $99,000 fix to to get us three more, four more years down the road. The, well, in my opinion, the the opportunity we have to consider tonight is a complete track overhaul. And that gets, um, without looking at it specifically, let me go back here, I think the total would be. Uh, upwards that we you could actually spend, um. I think close to $420,000 between between the the three different pieces, but you may not have to spend all of that. Um, so the the actual asphalt demo and repair to to redo the track as a whole is $345,000. If there is an aggregate base reconstruction that needs to take place, it would be an additional $52,000 on top of that. And if there is a subgrade stabilization that needs to take place, uh, it would be an additional $33,000. All of that would be would be predicated on um, a geotech report and some core samples that we would have to do to determine whether or not. That base is actually stable. Um, but when we and and you guys saw it in the in the updates uh, in in weeks past. That the 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 top end of this at $420, $430,000, if I do my math here real quick, that's 397, 98. Uh, so a- about $431,000. Um, is well under what other communities are paying for their tracks, you you guys should have seen a spreadsheet in one of the updates. And the um, districts were were redoing their tracks at. Um, well over $400,000 and into about half a million dollars to do so, so. In in my mind, this is a a great option and a moment we need to consider, but it's also one of only two options. I- in my mind, it's either pay the $4,500 and fill the cracks and probably have to do the same thing next year and the same thing next year. Until we come back in three years and pay more than $440, $430,000 to to rebuild the track. Because remember that the track is only a 20-year life expectancy, and we're we're getting to about 15 years on that track right now, and it has. Specific issues based upon water drainage after we redid the concession stand. So we can either, we can either do some $4,500 Band-Aids for a few years and then pay more than this. Or we can just address the issues that exist now and take care of it when we have the resources within our capital budget to do so. And they're tearing up our football field to ma- to make sure that we don't have issues moving forward, so. This is up for discussion, but I wanted to give you the backstory on what's going on with track.
I was, I was wondering why you didn't present the project with the turf when we voted, when we did that. If if we knew that we needed all all of this, why didn't we just com- combine it or talk about the same time?
Yep, so, um, one, because we initially thought that we only, that we were going to have about a 1.5 to 1.8 million dollar turf project. Um, and when we started having that discussion, um, we didn't, we didn't know that we would have money to do both. Right, so that was a big piece of it, the other piece of it was that when we when we first called uh, United about the cracks, we were just going to fill the cracks. We didn't really recognize the depth of of the issue. Um, until we we spent some more time really looking at what was going on with the track, so. We had initially intended to um, to do the the $4,500 Band-Aid, thinking that we could get through, but as we continue to see that move. Um, certainly there's an issue that that is there. We have, we, again, we have the ability within our budgets to do so, which is why it was presented as an offshoot when our turf project came in well under budget.
Any other questions for Dr. Cobbs?
Well, just by, just by filling the cracks, just by doing the Band-Aid. Uh, that won't address the issues from water drainage from the concession stand, will it?
No, no, it won't, so so part of this that would that would fix that would be a drain going around the edge of the track, so. As you guys know, that all of the concrete that was placed there within those sidewalks, that water sheets down. And it goes underneath the underneath the track at this point, just sits underneath, that's why you're seeing the movement in the asphalt. This would actually provide a drain along the edge of the of the track. Whereas it comes off, it runs it to the same drain that runs underneath our turf and out of out of the field and surface area.
Okay, so on on March 10th, though, you were fine with the $4,500. Um, on March 9th, we voted to approve the turf, and then on March 10th, Coach Hedrick posts on Facebook. That we're getting new turf, the board BOE approved turfing the football and soccer fields this summer and new track. Then on March, uh, that was on March 10th, the day after, and then I questioned you about it, and you said that you were fine with the $4,500. That you had not discussed track, Mid-America does do tracks as well, that you have not had that discussion with anyone other than asking what it would cost. But now then you're not good with the $4,500.
My job is to make a decision as to as to what is best for our district and propose that to the board. There were three of you that were very upset about a a text that came out or a Facebook post or whatever that came out from from Coach Hedrick. Once that happened, we definitely definitively dove further into what our issues were with the track. We also knew at that point in time that we had money to address those issues. Um, because our turf came in at substantially lower cost, so again, my job is to make sure that I present the board with all of those things, we've done so. I think you have all the information that you would need, but yes, at the time, we had discussed a $4,500 fix. Um, then it became an issue with our board, one that became uh, very public and and um. Some some real opinions on either side, which then was my task to make sure that you all had the information that you needed moving forward, which you now do to make this decision.
Okay.
Dr. Cobbs?
Yep.
Hey, I have a question, um, so is the water that's coming from the concession stand? It's, does, I'm trying to play it out in my head, is that concrete already butt? The track, so the water is sheeting across the track and then laying there at the football field?
So most of the water that's coming off, think about, um, when they did the new concession stand, they reconcreted all of the area from the old gate. Around the old concession stand and and a portion of the sidewalk underneath the bleachers, all the way down to the main gate that comes on to the field. There is an asphalt curb that sits there uh, throughout most of it, and that water will sheet down, but there are enough cracks in that asphalt now. It'll sheet down, it'll pool there, and then it'll run underneath that track surface. So Dean has, Dean has showed a picture there, and you can see the amount of concrete that's that's running. Um, and and this from about the midpoint of the bleachers all the way around to this new. New concrete, all the way back into the right of that, you don't see the other concrete from the concession stand. Is really where you're beginning to see the the real issues within the track. Um, and so there, this would put a drain all along um, that that north track edge. To make sure that any water sheeting off of that concrete would go underneath the track in a tube out through the out through the field. And where it would connect with the drainage system from the turf and then on out of the of the area.
Okay, so what we're getting now is it's all coming off the concrete in the grass face, under the sidewalk and under the track.
Yep.
I I wonder, um, wonder how much it'll help, once we have that clean gravel underneath the base for the turf. How much that'll help pull the water out from underneath there?
I think you're gonna see, and what my understanding is that um, that that turf is going to hold inches upon inches upon inches of water. That even when we had um, that deluge, so last year that we saw the flooding on the north end of town. That that would not have impacted our playing surface at all. That 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 rock and drainage system within that turf is is so great. That that water would have run right through it and out, never created an issue for us. So yeah, I think you're right, you're going to see a huge, a huge difference when that's in.
I bet when they dig all the grass out before they start this, I bet you they're just gonna see water weeping out from underneath that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't doubt it.
I have a couple of thoughts, go ahead, Harold, but I have a couple of thoughts also, go for it.
Okay, thank you, uh, I was trying to raise my hand, but I didn't know which hand I was supposed to raise. So anyway, um, I met you out there, so thank you for walking the track with me, I think that helped me, uh. I guess, uh, I don't discount that ultimately we have to do something. Um, I guess what I'm just trying to figure out is. Is today the day or uh, do we patch it? I mean, we gotta do something, so the $4,500 at a minimum is what we got to do, I mean, there are no doubt that we need to take care of it. Um, and I know we don't have a crystal ball, but I guess the the. The thought to wait a year and kind of see what, and patch it now and uh, live for another day. Um, are we going to see a major impact if we wait a year?
I think, I think what you will see, Harold, is an increase in cost to do it. So what what you gain from waiting a year when when you have, when you currently have the funds to address it. Is simply to pay more for it next time. That, I mean, that that that's the conundrum that that you as a board are are going to have to determine, because it's it's not going to be cheaper this time next year. That that much I'm I'm fairly positive of. So if if the if the only reason that we're wanting to wait is to be conservative. Then we also need to be be thinking in our in our conservative minds that being conservative is going to cost us more money next year. Uh, I I'm fairly positive that Mid-America will not give us a one-year bid, nor would anybody else. Um, and I think those of you that are involved in construction know they understand the reasons why you wouldn't do that.
Yes.
But would it be eventual, it's more, I definitely agree with Harold, we need a new track, been there, done that. But I am just so concerned about the uncertainty of what lies ahead, if there'll even be a child on that track using it. Granted, our community members do enjoy it, so I need to at least patch it. But other than that, the certainty of what's going to lie ahead, I just, I don't know what to.
Right, I and that that was some of my thinking was, um, as I I've thought through the track issue, there's a, there's a lot of um. Depression and angst with having to be quote unquote stuck in your house and things like that, but there is one outlet, and that is that people can be outdoors and can walk on the track. And I know when I've been out there, there've been folks still walking on the track at different times of the day and night, so it's really a window from the community into our district. First of all, and second of all, they measure us and how they've entrusted us with this 60-plus million dollars, are we taking care of what we have? And that's one of the measures that they use, when they see, they go into our facilities and they see. For the trumpet concert, that we don't have the walls painted or um, things like that that happen, I think it's really important that. We are um, a mirror of our district and how well we care for things. And so that would be my first thing, and the other thing is we are over $3 million, which means. And so that would be my first thing. And the other thing is we are over $3 million, which means we probably need to spend some of it down. In what fashion? There is probably no real prescription for that. But I don't know that I feel secure saying that that money's still going to be there in two years or three years. I think we have that money now to finish up what we're doing there and make it a real showcase appearance or, or a real showcase for everyone. And yes, there might not be kids on it next fall. They might be there in January. I don't know. We just don't know what the future holds, I guess. And all we know is that we've got a new reality that we've got to deal with.
Sorry, Susan, go ahead.
That's all I got.
Okay. I also see this as a case of being penny wise and pound foolish. We can throw $4,500 a year at it for a while and spend quite a bit of money, or we could do the job right the first time.
Dr. Cobb, your recommendation is going for option three, four, and five? Is that correct?
Yeah. My recommendation would be to, to completely redo the track. I think it, it gets upwards of, I think, $430,000. But again, option four and five are, are based upon need for those things. So the actual track replacement is $345,000. Those other option four and five, those values may reduce based upon what they find once they take the asphalt off. But not to exceed those dollars. And we need to be clear on that. It may go upwards to that, but would not exceed those dollars.
So this would bring us down to roughly 2.5 million then in the capital budget, 2.6 million?
No.
No.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna end at 3.2. So you'd, you'd, you'd still be just under, there, there would still be just under $3 million.
Okay, okay. That's, you know, we definitely need to keep $2 million in there, but I feel a little uncomfortable with having over $3 million in there.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Harold?
Yeah. I guess my, I'm coming back to this timing. I don't disagree with any of the discussions said tonight. I think all points are valid. And I think that's what makes this board great is we bring different points of view. I guess what I'm trying to weigh is, is do, do we have to make the decision tonight? Or if we, I know we don't have a meeting in two weeks. Normally we would say we have a meeting in two weeks, but I think our next meeting is the first of June. If we, if we don't make a decision tonight, but bring it back up on the next meeting, is that hurt us?
The, the only thing that I could think about if you, if you table it, Harold, is, is whether or not it can be done prior to the, the start of school. So the current contract with Mid-America has them finishing by August 14th, I think, which is the night before the scrimmage or, or something. I can't remember how we came up with that date, but I think that's what it is. If we, if we don't mobilize on track before then, then, then we may be pushing that, that date back, which is not necessarily a huge deal. We can, we can work around some of those things as we need to. And, and look, I think, I think most people, when they see what that facility is going to look like, are, are able to give up an extra week or, or something like that before we get on it. I don't know that that's the worst thing in the world if this board feels like it needs to, to sleep on this decision before they mix it.
Dr. Cobb's did, did, we don't know the geo report cost. That's the only thing we don't know, right?
No, the only thing, the only geotech we have is the one from
OHS.
The one from OHS, which would have been 200 yards away or something, something like that. I did share it with Mid-America as well as with every other turf group when they, when they bid on the, the actual turf piece. They didn't seem to have an issue with it at that point in time. But I think that they want to do something to make sure that, that they don't put a track down and then have the same issues occur 10 years down the road and have us come back to them and say, look, you said you were going to fix this and you didn't. So I don't know what the geotech cost would be, but I don't think it was, I don't think it was huge when we did it here at, at OHS.
Ryan?
Yes, ma'am.
I would definitely like to see this tabled. If we could move forward with the test and come back to this the next meeting and make a determination, is that possible? Is that doable?
Well, we're, we're, we're not gonna, if, if what you're asking is if can we go ahead and do the geo test? We're, we're not in charge of doing the geo test. We would tell them to do the geo test. And, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be something that you would have done. It, it's not for us to mobilize. That, that would, it would be a, a fairly robust undertaking and something that I would want to put in their hands to do.
Okay.
We don't want that responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I totally get everybody's point of view. I think we're all have great points. I think the hardest thing is, is the pandemic we're in and spending this kind of money and making sure when we pull the trigger, we pulled the trigger at the right time. I myself can see that this is a great deal. They're giving us a great price on the one because they're already there mobilized. Two, it would be much easier for them to tie all the drainage together while they're there versus, I think, as Harold or somebody said, even if we came back a year from now. And then Dr. Cobb, you had said that it would cost more money, and I'm sure it would. I mean, they'd have to undo the turf, roll it back, just to work on the track. I, I just, I can see it needs to be fixed because we have life safety issues when somebody can trip while they're running on the track and severely injure themselves. I just don't know what the right decision is right now.
Well, does somebody want to make a motion, one way or the other?
Yeah, I'll just step up there and get in front of the firing squad. That we replace the track, completely replace the track for it'll be a little under $41,000, $431,000, a little less than that, from what I understand.
At the most.
Yes.
Second.
It has been moved by Linda and seconded by Susan that we replace the track in its entirety for that up to $430,000. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
I just stated why, but I'm a no right now tonight.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Melidia Payne?
No.
Shanda Olmstead?
No.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
No.
All right, that motion fails. One, two, three, four to three. Would somebody like to make a second motion?
To do what?
Would somebody like to table this and bring it back at the next meeting?
I'd move to table it and bring it back. I'd move to table and bring it back in 30 days. Or next meeting, whatever our next meeting is.
Okay. So it's been moved by Harold and seconded by Shanda that we table this and bring it back to our next meeting. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Why not?
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
No.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
All right, and that passes six to one.
I'm gonna say one thing, though. We've learned from farming, and this is an addendum to this discussion. We've learned from farming, never put off to tomorrow what you can do today. We've learned that lesson the hard way lots of times.
All right. Well, we are going to go ahead and move from the track discussion and move to the curriculum resources discussion. And I, I believe Mrs. Bybee is joining us tonight to give us some information on that. And this will be an action item tonight.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi. Okay. Well, our Family and Consumer Science was up for curriculum review this year. And last year, when we re, redid our curriculum review schedule, our, our CTE courses were not really in that schedule. They, well, they were, but they were all in on the same year. And since there are so many CTE courses, they were very easily looked, looked over. And what we determined is, as going through this study this year, is that many of our textbooks in our Family and Consumer Science are over 20 years old. So it was a good time to be able to go through their curriculum to make sure that we have our competencies aligned, six, 12. And so those, those teachers did a lot of work. And I appreciate the work that they've done and Stella Hart led with Mrs. Becker and myself. So we're, we're very pleased with what they have looked at and come up with. So PowerPoint, Dean, that was the, that's what we would look at too. So we have the, in this, you will see that our courses and pathways, I've put into blue what the courses were and red what the pathway is. Because many of these courses are for multiple pathways, can be for multiple pathways. So our process that we went through is that they, the teachers developed a, a curriculum map template that works for CTE courses. So the template that I had given to all of our teachers to be working on with their curriculum maps was fine, but it really didn't have the information that we needed for all of the information that we need for CTE courses. So in a few slides, you'll be able to see a few examples of those. They also looked at all of the competencies because there have been some updates to those competencies. The competencies are like the standard for, for other core classes that you've heard about as standards. CTE courses are, they are, the teachers have competencies that they need to make sure that our students are attaining in order to complete those courses. So they worked through all of those. They completed their curriculum maps or are almost complete. You'll see that there are a lot of courses. So there's, teachers are teaching more than one course. So they may not have those completed yet at this point, but they will have those completed. They'll continue to work on those to make sure that those get completed. And then they research the materials for the resources that they needed. So the next two slides, those are examples of the curriculum maps that the teachers developed. Really what it does differently than another course is that it adds the course name, the pathway that it's a part of. And then if it's, what level it is, whether it's an introductory course, a technical or application course, and what, how much of a credit it is worth. So that really gives more detail to specific, specifically to our CTE courses. So that is kind of, that kind of gives you an example of what the curriculum map, maps that they have developed. Then as far as looking at the resources, Dean, it's the one that says recommended, recommended resource costs. So I tried to put these all into one document so it was easier to kind of look at what all of those quotes are, because I know there were a lot of quotes on this, on this to be able to look at for facts. So you'll see that you have the course over on the left-hand side, the recommended resource. The great thing is, is that we'll have this as also another document that if we have any new teachers coming in, we know specifically what that textbook is or what that recommended resource is that we use for that course and what is expected for our teachers to be using for that course. The quantity, what the teachers needed, most of them just needed a class set. They don't need one per student. Most of these have an online portion where students will be able to access that resource online in addition to having a hard copy that's when they're, when they're in the classroom, they'll be able to have access to that hard copy. And then what the cost and the total cost was. And I also delineated between the vendors. So the Foundations of Restaurant Management and Culinary Arts, that's a vendor. And then Pearson, that's a separate vendor. So that, that way we could kind of, you could kind of keep track of the different vendors that we're using. If you look at Goodheart Wilcox Publisher, there's quite a few courses that are Family Studies, are Foundations to Early Childhood, Nutrition and Wellness. There's a lot of those textbooks that actually are used. There's different portions of those textbooks that are used with those courses. So some you will see that it's C above, but that, that's because it's the, for that course, we are using those books, but it's all, those textbooks, but it's already reflected in the price that's above that. Does that make sense in that document? So the, the only thing that isn't a really a textbook is that Application to Early Childhood is the Foundations for Safe and Healthy Early Care Facilities. That's a module. And that, at the most, we typically have 25 kids in that class, but usually it's much less than that. But that's an, that's, that's a yearly fee. So that would be a fee that we would need to make sure we purchase each year. But that's based on the number of students that are enrolled in that course. And what that does is that allows them to receive certification upon completion of that course. So, so that is reflected in there, but, but that we wouldn't pay right away. That we would pay in the fall when we know how many kids are needing to have that module. So the total of, oh, the other thing that I should note is down at the bottom of that, Foundations of Travel and Tourism. At this time, we don't have that course, but we will need to have it within the next three years to be part of the pathway. So that will be something that we will be looking towards. But at that point, we will take a look at what materials we need at that time. So we didn't want to purchase something because we're not, we don't have the course currently. So the total of all of those resources comes to $31,199.62. Any questions about Family and Consumer Science?
Will you clarify, did you say we're 20 years old on like all these things or just?
Not all of them, but some of them. Yeah. So there, there's, you'll be able to see that in that, there were some that I noted that the current textbook, let's see, for Event Planning and Management, that, that one, the current textbook is still okay. I think it was like a 2016 version. So she must have been able to get some at that point for that class.
20 years old, that's how old I am.
Again, again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I don't think, I don't think we've ever, I don't remember ever passing any texts for, for this area. That's kind of sad. Well, they were very excited to be able to actually go through this process. It was a, a newer process for them. Even though we've been talking about curriculum maps all, all year, they were very happy to be part of looking at resources and determining what would be best for their course.
Oh, just one quick question. I read through some of it, but is all of it online? Kind of if we have to do some of the stuff online platform?
Yeah, the majority, I think, I think all of them have, like the activity book that you'll see that that's, there's, or in the teacher package, it's all resources that go along with those books.
And that's what I was hoping that will. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, the kids will have that ability to be able to access it online.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bybee, for giving us such great and, and complete information. Would somebody like to make a motion or action on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So Chris has made the motion and Shanda has seconded to approve the purchase of materials for FACS resources totaling $31,199.62. We will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Yes.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmstead?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winger?
Yes.
And that passes seven oh. And Mrs. Bybee, you're going to speak with us on math curriculum now, correct?
Yes, yes. So this is a little different than, than the FACS in that we are looking to do, have a plan for a pilot for next year. And the reason we're planning to, the second slide there, Dean. The, if you remember, I've, I've presented to you before the process that we've been going through with the curriculum adoption and which phases that we're in. And typically, we don't spend a full year, if even really six months piloting materials. But that is what's actually recommended. It's just districts usually don't have the ability to be able to do that. So, but with, with this year, with stopping when we had to stop our, our school, we did not get to finish our process the way we really wanted to. So up to this point, our high school and middle school had really completed, well, the middle school had completed their process of, of looking at two different resources, both of them being what's considered a problem solving model. And high school was looking at CPM, which is a college And high school was looking at CPM, which is a college preparatory mathematics model or resource that also is a problem-solving model. And they're also still looking at illustrative mathematics, which is what our middle school has, is looking at, to do a pilot for a full year. Now, elementary was not yet as far in looking at, at different resources, so we had kind of held off a little bit on elementary, and what we were looking at for elementary was, what do we do with our current, our current materials? Our current materials are MyMath in elementary. No longer can we get the 2013 version, which is what we have right now. So that means we would need to update to the 2018 version of MyMath. And there have been some updates with that version. So we did some, had some representatives present to our teachers what those updates are, so that we could understand, they're trying to increase more rigor, which is what we need. They're trying to increase the coherence and, and the problem-solving that happens within that, those materials, and then within that instruction. And then they've also added some pieces with assessment and tasks, problem-solving tasks. So that, we have determined we will stay, stick with the majority of the grade levels. Some of the grade levels, kindergarten and one grade, or one, Sunflower second grade, are going to be looking at Eureka Math, and that is another problem-solving model. So that's kind of the direction that math instruction is moving towards, is that problem-solving model, based on the recommendations from KSDE, and also recommendations from the National Council of Mathematic Teachers, Teachers of Mathematics. And so we've had a group of teachers going through the last two years, regional trainings through Emporia State University, and that is exactly the types of things from elementary that they are teaching, are really re-teaching them what in math instruction should look like to our teachers. So I tried to put in a little bit of information for you, just to understand what that problem-solving model looks like. It's different than the traditional model of teaching mathematics, in that it's more about the problem-solving, it's more about really activating our students' critical thinking, understanding what those standards are, but really understanding the concept behind the mathematical problems versus just going straight to the process of how to solve, or how to do a computation problem. So, so what those, what that model looks like, it's really, it, you could, it could be very confusing, because you'll hear discovery, which that's, that's word term has been used, discovery instruction, problem-solving instruction, or problem-solving model. But basically what it is, is it's not that students are completely on their own trying to figure this out, and the teacher's not there to help. But really, it's a structure of providing the mathematical practices within the classroom that we need to, should be seen in all of our classrooms, and that would be the next slide, Dean, is that having those effective teaching practices, and the ones I would like to highlight are the tasks that promote reasoning and problem-solving. So often, when we, our kids are learning math, they are just, just tell me how to do it, just show me the model, tell me how to do it. I may not really understand the concept behind it, so if I see it in a little bit different fashion, I may not know how to solve that. So just show me how to do this multiplication problem, and I'll go through the steps, and that's what I memorize, and that's what I'm going to be able to do with my math. What we're seeing with our, our test results is that our kids, when they see a problem that is a problem-solving problem, which is typically how they're addressed on state assessments, let's say, or even out in the real world, when you're trying to figure out problems that have math in them, it's very hard for them sometimes to generalize that and apply their knowledge, because all they've learned is how, well, I know how to do the steps, but I'm not really seeing the patterns, I've not been able to have opportunities to really talk about it and think about it, and have, and really have that true understanding of what that concept is. So that's what, when we talk about problem-solving model, the structure, so what I've put in this PowerPoint, I'm not going to go through each one of those, is that the teaching practices, and there are, on the next slide, Dean, there are practices that we would want our students to be participating in, and some of those even construct viable arguments and critique the reasoning of others. When you talk to kids, even in the classrooms that I have observed, I talked with a couple of high school kids, I had one who'd said, well, I don't really like human interaction. So, so she would prefer to just have the teacher tell her what to do, and she'll do the problem, and that's it. But, but, so trying to, this is a different type of a model, and trying to get the kids to talk to each other, reason with each other, well, this is why I think this happens, I see this pattern, and this is, then I can connect it to what I've already learned in order to truly understand the concepts that we're trying to teach in math. So, so I wanted to give you a, just a little bit of background on what that problem-solving model is, and why we're looking at wanting to pilot these. The reason we want to pilot, and I also, in that, you can read through the example, an example of kind of how a lesson works. It doesn't mean they don't ever get to that procedural piece, they do. And that's so, but they start off with the concept of understanding first, and then they'll move to that procedural piece, where the students learn how to actually do the procedure of whether it's division, or, or multiplication, or figuring out, using algebraic concepts, geometry concepts, they will still get to that procedural fluency piece. So the reason we feel like it's important to do this pilot for, for middle and for high, and then the areas that we've talked about for elementary for a year, is this is a different type of model. So we do need to be able to have teachers have the opportunity to really have the professional development it takes to be able to understand it, and know how to provide this instruction, and then how to help our, our students to move in that direction, and be able to understand how they can actually, the, the kids that I talked to in middle school who had done some of this, they, after a month or two, there were some that were like, okay, I actually like this better. I didn't like it at first, it was very uncomfortable, but now I really feel like I understand these concepts better. So there, but it's one of those things where we have to embrace as a district, and we have to decide, after we have worked with it, and we can see some data from it, is this the direction that we want to go? So that's why we're proposing a year pilot, so that by next spring, we can make a true determination of this is the direction we want our math instruction to go within our district. Elementary wasn't quite ready to go for a full across-the-board pilot, so that we picked those pockets of teachers that were like, hey, we want to try this, this, this work, we've really looked into this. Kindergarten, and quite a few teachers had looked into Eureka Math. There are a lot, there are quite a few Kansas districts that are using Eureka Math. So we will do some visiting of those districts, if we are allowed to, this next year. And also, they will also get professional development to be able to really understand how this instruction should look in the classroom. Versus what typically you do, is that we purchase the materials, we get the professional development afterwards. So regardless, all of the professional development that we will have for K-12 will help our math instruction, regardless of what resource we end up going with. So I feel like that's a positive too, that we have. So on the, any questions about that first, before I go on to the pilot plan?
Are these first-time experiences with, with these resources, I mean, for, with, let me say this right, Eureka? Is this the first time we've messed, done anything with Eureka before?
Yeah, some of the teachers have tried different tasks, they have different tasks. So some have tried different tasks. Last year, a few of the math cadre members did, but it was mostly kindergarten, second grade, there were some other second grades, not even at Sunflower, but at, at Lincoln that had also tried some of these tasks.
Okay. So are these trials for Eureka, or we're just going to do a trial?
Kindergarten and Sunflower at second grade is trying Eureka Math. That's a, a year-long try, a year-long pilot for Eureka Math. All the other classrooms will be doing the updated MyMath. And that was, what I had told you is that we can't get the 2013 version anymore, we have to get the 2018. They will stick with the MyMath. And then KSDE has added, within our flipbooks, which are a, a resource for teachers, within the standards, they have added some tasks, some problem-solving tasks with Eureka Math with, from illustrative math, as part of what would be expected to be in our classrooms. So we will mold those in within our MyMath. But we will be asking our teachers to really use this MyMath. Everybody who is not doing the pilot for elementary will be expected to do the MyMath, the updated MyMath, with some tasks, problem-solving tasks, that we will decide as a math cadre. What we want to get to is we understand that up to this point, teachers have been doing some supplements with the standards that they feel like MyMath isn't covering. So we want to make sure that as a math cadre, as we move through this year, that we're looking to see, do these new updated materials, do they cover those standards that weren't covered in our prior materials? And if so, if they don't, what are we supplementing? And we're doing this as a system versus just teachers having to figure out what they think they want to use. So that's, that is the work that I've talked with the math cadre about, that we will continue to do for elementary. Middle school will be doing a full year of illustrative math, their entire department will be doing illustrative math. And then high school, we have three teachers that will be doing a year-long pilot for CPM. All of them will receive the professional development, though, because it will be important for them to be part of the professional development. Three of them will be doing the CPM math, and that is an ebook pilot, so all our students will have the ebooks, our teachers, everything will be basically online, that they will be able to have those materials. That's why there's not a cost for the ebook for CPM. They so much, they believe in their program so much that they allow districts to do, you have to commit to a year-long, but they provide the professional development and the ebooks without a cost, so that they make sure teachers have a real strong understanding of, of what CPM can, can do with kids, for our kids in Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II.
Okay, that was another question I had written down, so I'm glad you answered that on the PD. I was wondering if, where that was factored into the cost of all this?
Yes, and then unless, so that one is free, illustrative math, there is a cost for the illustrative math PD for middle school. MyMath does not have a cost for their professional development that we will do, and Eureka Math has a slight cost. Theirs, for sure, right now is virtual. The others have not decided at this point whether they will be virtual professional development or not.
And so do these vendors set up all the teachers and students on these sites, on some of this mobile stuff?
Yes, well, it's through our district, our district will be doing it. Work with, yes, but they work with the vendor, our, our district will work with those vendors on getting.
I was just making sure it wasn't, hey, here's the keys to the car, good luck.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So, so looking at what, and on the recommended resource page, which is another, one of, where I put all of those resources together, you can see the cost of what Eureka Math is for kindergarten and Sunflower second grade, and then what MyMath is, the updated is $31,976. What I added in the other column, the cost of current materials, is typically we would be paying $12,819.58 for the current MyMath materials, that's because we were on a six-year deal, that would have been what we were paying for elementary materials. And then middle school is, for the illustrative math, is $14,839.78. And typically, we would be paying with Glencoe Math, is what their current materials are, So there's not a lot of difference in the, in the middle school cost. And then CPM for OHS does not have a cost. So the total cost for pilot materials, math material, because really, MyMath isn't as much a pilot as it is, that's what we'll just continue with our math instruction as we have up to this point, $53,170.72.
Thank you, Mrs. Bybee. Does anyone have any questions before we take some action here tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for that explanation, and, you know, ironically, I started out in August, talking to Dr. Cobb's about this, he probably shared that with you. He's quoted me a couple of times in board meetings since then. I have a really concern that we seem to be jumping curriculums every four or five years. And we just seem to be getting, you know, year one, we learn about a little bit, year two, we hit a little bit further ahead steam, we got it fully rolled out by end of year two, and end of three, year three, and then year four or five, here we are again, going for another curriculum. And, you know, when we switched over five years ago, I think it was, to MyMath from Everyday Math, I agreed that we had to switch, because Everyday Math was telling me that two plus two kind of rounded up to about five, you know what I mean? And that just didn't make any sense to me. We just switched science a couple of years ago, we switched reading, two years ago for the lower primary end, and then, you know, last October, the fourth and fifth, got their reading, and then of course, four or five months later into it, we abandoned school. I guess my overall concern for elementary is, is that, you know, I'm one who kind of like stay true to the system, and if it's not broken, why fix it? And I think we're just starting to see some trends in our math scores going up. And yeah, I think we went through a period that we didn't see the math scores where we wanted them to be, and they, they may not be where we need to be today, but I do think we're trending up. And so my concern on the elementary is that if we're piloting lower, okay, obviously that's where we ought to pilot, because then if we do it, we're, we'll make a full switch. I can't imagine being a teacher in our district in elementary the next year or two. We're coming back in August, we've already said, we're, we know going into August of 2020 is not going to look like August of 2019. The teachers will face new obstacles that they've never faced before, whether it's continued learning, whether it's online learning, whether it's whatever. So now we'll throw in some pilots, we'll go throw in learning, Fautness and Penel. And my only concern is, is that, you know, I'm not so sure we don't need to hit a pause and say, you've already kind of said, I'm not, if I'm misquoting you, Mrs. Bybee, please tell me, I'm, I don't want to misquote you, but we're updating MyMath, and we're, we're going from the 2013, I made a note, that we're going from 2013 to 2018. We're filling in some of those gaps that we've had already, that we knew we needed to do. So for me, I'm okay with, I think we do some, have some challenges in the middle school and high school, as Dr. Cobb's and I spoke today. But, and so I'm fine with piloting and trying to, I like the direction you're going there. I just think that we need to hit a pause on the elementary part of it, and, and focus on getting, A, the MyMath updated from 2013 to today, and then B, figure out what the learning's going to look like come August, whether it's, you know, a combination, hybrid of what we're doing, but one thing we do know is not going to look like it did August of 2019. So for me personally, I have great concerns by throwing one more thing at teachers on the elementary side, and at students, you know, and saying, hey, we're switching this over. So those are my two cents right now.
Well, I would agree with you, in that I do feel like districts quite often got into that five-year routine. We have, the state has increased that to seven years, they don't change, they're, they're looking at standards now every seven years. But I do think, I think that's why elementary is holding, didn't decide on something this year, is because they just weren't ready. We, we were doing a lot of building our knowledge with making sure we understand what instructional practices we need to have in place, what are the, how do we get our kids to be thinkers? Sometimes the, the workbooks in MyMath is this way scaffolds it too much, which means it breaks it apart too much, that makes the kids not be thinkers, they're just following through the steps. So I know that there were teachers that were doing a lot of supplementing outside of this, of their current MyMath. That week, that's when we have, start to have problems, is when we're all not doing a consistent, providing consistent instruction within our classrooms. So while, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate that, I think that we have tried to really follow what the teachers are, what they're feeling that they need also for their classrooms. And I will tell you, our kindergarten was very collective. This wasn't just a few teachers saying, hey, we want to try Eureka. This was every single one of them coming together and saying, this is, we don't feel like MyMath is appropriate for kindergarten. The number sense that is in Eureka Math is, is The number sense that is in Eureka Math is, is apparently very strong. We wanted to see that in action to see. We know number sense is an area that we need to make sure that our, our kids have K3 for sure and moving and possibly even K4. Eureka Math does have that. I'm not saying we would even stay with Eureka Math, but we, it would be a way for us to get an opportunity to see what does that number sense look like? And do the kids really seem to be understanding the concepts? The people that we talked to so far that have used Eureka Math have seen that response in kids. So the kindergarten, really, this wasn't something where I went to them and said, hey, let's, let's pilot this. They came, they basically said, look, we all want to do it. That's why there's only one grade level of second grade, because we didn't force second grade to do it across the board. Teachers have to embrace what they, what they, of the resource that they want to do. And there were others that said, I'm probably feeling what you were just saying, Harold. No, we're not ready to do it. We want to stick with MyMath for another year, and let's take a look at some of what the other resources are out there. Let's still look at Eureka Math, but let's not do it as a whole, do it for a whole year. That's why there's only one grade level, full grade level, and then sunflower, second grade agreeing to do it at this point.
And, and I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I guess my question to you is, is that I don't go test drive a car if I don't expect to drive it. So I guess what I'm, what I'm concerned here is that we go on a pilot with Eureka. I think our district has pretty much said, if we pilot something, we'll go roll it out a year later. And so the number sense is a great point about the difference between Eureka and math and MyMath. But I guess my question is, is that's a good fit for maybe kindergarten? But is that unilateral? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, are we, are we changing from MyMath to Eureka because of some deficiencies in MyMath in kindergarten versus saying what you said? I'm, I'm a fidelity to the process guy, and I know teachers don't like that. So let me help you with that. I don't think we have to have 100% fidelity to the process, but I think, as I shared with Dr. Cobb's today, I think we need fidelity to a large part, whether that's 60, 70, 80%. You can decide. I'm not the teacher in the classroom. I do like the idea that we give our teachers total latitude to say one of two things. One is there's a deficiency and I'm going to make up for it. Number two is, I see kids over here that are excelling, but I see kids over here that need some help. I think it's great we give those teachers at whatever grade level, the ability to supplement with mountain math, or do spiraling, or do departmentalization, whatever the key words are that they've all tried to educate me over the last few months on this. But my point being is, is that I still think that the core deal is we need to come back to a fidelity at some point in time, and, and maybe that's 60 or 70%. But we need to give the ability to be flexible as well. And I guess my thought is, could we not do the same thing with MyMath to say, okay, you know what, LM in kindergarten, it really is deficient on number sense. We've got to come up with something else. And, and so my concern is, is that, you know, if this pilot, you know, where are we going in? Walk me through the progression. So we like it in 2020, 2021 school year in kindergarten. Let's say it was a success. Do we wake up in, in August of 2021 and are we going to roll out Eureka for all the elementaries?
No, because what we, well, possibly, over the course of this next year, the hope would be is that we would continue with the other grade levels, is looking at Eureka Math in those grade levels. We just wouldn't be doing the full long pilot. It would be more the, the traditional way that we did the curriculum adoption, where we might be taking a unit to be able to use Eureka Math to be able to teach a unit. The other thing is illustrative mathematics, which is what the middle school's going to be looking at. Elementary doesn't come out until, we probably will start to see those in the spring. It will not be ready for publication until 2021. And that is one that the teachers were very interested in looking at. So it's, it's, and I've talked with kindergarten about, understand that if you do Eureka and we decide we like, as a, as a collective group, that we think we need to go more with illustrative math, or I know one of the, some of the teachers are wanting to look more closely into math. So just because we're piloting Eureka doesn't mean that we are doing that the next year with everybody, but it's part of the process that we're going to go through to be able to really understand, because remember, Eureka Math is a problem solving model, to really understand through kindergarten, is this a model that we see being successful, first of all, for our little ones? And, and second of all, is the number sense as strong as they say it is? And if so, is now, if we look at illustrative math, they're going to have a better sense of what they're looking for when they're looking at illustrative, when it comes out. And then those other teachers that are looking at the other programs or resources out next year, they, it, we would still be in a process of a curriculum adoption process that we just have one group of teachers that would be doing Eureka Math.
So Harold, I wanted to, something that, that you had stated about past practice being that we pilot something and we purchase it the next year. And, and you're right, that has, that has been our district's past practice, and, and it's a practice that we're trying to get away from. And so maybe we should expand on the, on the purpose of the, of the pilot. When, when we have not piloted material, you know, really what we've done is we've taken a look at resources as they've come in, we sit across the table. Typically, there's a checklist of what they have, what they don't have, and we choose the shiniest model, right? And, and we bring in a group of teachers, oh, I really like this one, because it, it might be that the pages are colored and they, they really like the way that it looks and jumps off the page. Because we've not gotten into it and known anything about the resource, we don't understand specifically about where it has gaps, and they will all have gaps. And none of them are going to meet all of our needs for our specific kids. So the purpose behind piloting multiple resources is so that when we do get to that point and we do sit down with those resources and we do have that checklist and we start identifying what works and what doesn't work, that we've already identified the gaps. This one doesn't have this, and we'd have to supplement with this. This one doesn't have this, and we'd have to supplement with this. So that we can have that conversation when we do come back to the board and ask for the purchase of materials, we say, not only are we going to purchase whatever math resource, but we also need to purchase these supplementals to meet all of our needs, and we can hit the ground running and not have to work through a year and identify gaps and go, oops, oops, oops. It doesn't do what we thought it did. So whether we're, whether we're piloting Eureka, or Intu Math, or illustrative, or CPM, or whatever it is, all of our staff know that we are not, we are not piloting it saying that because we pilot, we're going to purchase. We're piloting it with the understanding of we need to determine what meets our students' needs. We need to, we need to pilot it to determine whether or not we have the skills capable of providing instruction in that particular role, we need more PD, all of those things. So we can come back and made a great recommendation to our board, so that we're not sitting here in five years again saying, we need to change. That we have everything in front of us to make a great decision about the instructional model moving forward with our kids.
And Harold, it really could be, it could be that our teachers decide with the updated math, with the MyMath 2018, and, and combining that with the problem solving tasks. That may be what they decide, hey, this, this really, what the updates, the rigor that they added, the, the assessments that they've added, and the problem solving tasks, that's really what we want. It could be that we end up sticking with MyMath, the updated version.
So my, my comeback to that is, number one, I will never again vote like we did Fontanis and Pinnell and vote for, to go fourth and fifth grade, and it wasn't even printed. What a disaster. Number two is if our middle school kind of likes this Elektra, and I'm going to butcher that, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, it took me a long time. Is it illustrative or is it illustrative? Yes.
Right, okay. And if they're kind of modeling that, okay? One of the reasons we chose MyMath is, I was looking down, trying to get some of my notes, but anyway, I can't find them, is that we did MyMath in middle school just before we did MyMath in elementary. And what we decided as a district, if I think I'm right on this, is that since the middle school has had success and they're rolling it out, let's pair that up. I guess my thought is, is that if we're a year away from the Elektra's company having anything even to look at for elementary, we know we're not going to pilot anything for, you know, at least a year till they roll it out. I agree with that we ought to pilot before we purchase. I like that idea, and I think that makes sense. I just am questioning whether that now's the time to be piloting on the elementary side, okay? Until we kind of know more definitively, like you just said, do we, do we see the upgrades in MyMath and do we see benefit to that? Do we want to take a look and pilot at Elektra's? And when they roll out their elementary, you know, things like that. So I'm just, in my own mind, I think we need to do the middle school and the high school piece. I'm just struggling on the elementary piece as to whether now's the time to pilot that or not.
Well, and then the other piece too, for that, no matter which we would go with, we've already looked at illustrative and CPM, they do align. So if they were to go with, you know, middle school with illustrative, high school with CPM, does align with the, the standards that it covers and the, the sequence that it covers. So that's what we would be looking at for, for elementary. If we were to decide that, hey, 612, we know what we want to do, then we have to look at, well, whatever we're choosing for elementary, whether it's MyMath with the problem solving, whether it's illustrative, problem solving task, whether it's illustrative or Eureka Math, or some other resource, we need to make sure that it aligns in what would be expected of kids moving into sixth grade. So all of that is, is part of that process.
Uh, Mrs. Bybee, the only thing I don't like is that we can't go test drive the car without spending $50,000, you know? But I, I guess that's just the difference in what I'm used to dealing with and what educators are.
Well, you look at 50,000, but look at like middle school, again, with the materials, if, whether they went stuck with Glencoe Math, which, which has not shown great success, or they do illustrative, that's, that's about a thousand dollar difference. So 50,000 sounds like a lot, but you have to realize we would be purchasing materials for them to use next year, whether it's Glencoe or, or the illustrative math, the McGraw-Hill. For elementary, it is a little bit more than what they would typically be purchasing, but we, we would not be able to purchase that 12,000 anyway. We would have to go with what the McGraw-Hill is and the MyMath, the updated MyMath. And the, the difference in price there would, would be honestly, just a couple thousand dollars, because elementary or first, second, second grade is, MyMath right now is 5,000, and the other grades are about 6,500. So, so we're probably with that second grade doing Eureka Math, you're taking that 1,500 away. And then kindergarten, if we were to order kindergarten MyMath, it would probably be around that 5,000 mark. So, so it's really, it's really less, it's not, it's about the same amount of money, it's just where are we putting that money towards?
Right. Now, do we save any money when we're piloting and then we decide to go with it because we've already started? Does some of that material that we have from the pilot carry over when we purchase the full bone?
Well, uh, let's see. The kindergarten, yes, because the teacher additions, they would already have those, so you wouldn't have to repurchase those. The digital suite, I believe, would be a, and a yearly cost. If we went with them the next year and we did more of a six-year type of a, a deal, then, then you get more discounts. But the teacher additions, they would already have. The student workbooks, they would, we would need to repurchase, and same with the digital suite.
Okay.
So most of them, the teacher additions would, would already be part of that process.
Okay, I was just trying to weigh like, hey, you know, if I understand pilots, we don't want to buy everything at once in case this doesn't work for us.
Right.
But just what the difference is in cost is all I was, thank you.
I had a question about kindergarten and the, the updating to MyMath 2018. Did they look at that, the updates to what that would be before? Well, I guess they haven't done Eureka. I mean, did they? So go ahead.
They were part of that presentation, so they looked at, and they had the materials with them. So during one of their PLCs, they really went through the, the materials and they passed it around so that they could see, they, they didn't feel like the number sense was where they wanted it to be.
But they have not seen the illustrative or the other one that you stated?
Right, illustrative isn't out yet. We've seen sample lessons and we've seen some of the problem solving tasks, but illustrative is not out yet.
And so what you're recommending is a voluntary trial? Is that what I'm understanding? Just to clarify.
Right, I'm not, we're not, we're not forcing a pilot of Eureka Math. We only wanted the teachers who were interested in looking at the problem solving model. And Eureka Math right now is that, was the one that's available. And we had some teachers that were using some of those tasks within their classrooms last year. And so they wanted to do, kindergarten wanted to do the full year.
And then I just had the, one more question, I'm sorry. It was the, how, you mentioned talking with others and groups being a big portion of these. So how would these translate to online? Because as we're seeing that the next year is not going to be a traditional rollout to school. So how would these new, how would these translate to, to the kids being online?
Well, that's a great question, honestly, Melidia, because they do have a lot on their websites for how they're providing that distance learning for, for kids who are using the illustrative math in the middle school, or CPM math, or the Eureka Math. But the reality is, is that would be something we would have to work out with our teachers. When we have, when we have figured out, are we able, is everything all on a distance learning, or are we able to do some groups, small groups? We'll have to just work with those through the professional development that we'll be receiving. That would be one of the key questions that we will be asking for sure. And that's with any resource, that's also with MyMath, the updated MyMath.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Bybee before we take action? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Um, I make a motion, we do the trial as presented and supplement with MyMath as you need to. I don't know the exact numbers, but.
Okay. So you, you are taking action, motioning that we approve the purchase of materials for math resources totaling $53,170.72, is that right, Susan? Is there a second?
Second.
We will do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio? Yes. Melidia Payne?
No.
Shanda Olmsted?
Yes.
Susan Ward?
Yes.
Harold Winkert?
Well, I'm going to stick with my original position that I've held since August, that, you know, I, I just think from the elementary side and since emotions all rolled into one, I'm in favor of the pilots going in, in the middle school and high school, but I'm going to vote no due to the elementary piece being rolled in. I have grave concerns about what that does for elementary, so I vote no.
All right, thank you. That passes five to two. Thank you, Mrs. Bybee, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are on here to the next section of reports and presentations, and excited to hear from Dr. Cobb's and maybe Mrs. Whitaker about what graduation is going to look like.
Well, we're going to stand here so we can remain socially distant from one another. But we're going to have, Mrs. Whitaker is going to present the idea behind graduation, the process that she utilized to go through there. I know that there's been some discussion over the last, really through the last few hours about what's happening. We haven't, we haven't publicly identified exactly what we're having for graduation because we wanted to present it to, to you as the board. But I'm going to let Mrs. Whitaker talk about her, her committee that she utilized to, to go through this process, the number of students that she communicated with, and ultimately the, the plan that we have for, for a ceremony for graduates in June.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me tonight. So this whole situation that we're in right now, that our COVID pandemic has placed upon us, and kind of taking away so many opportunities away from all of our students, but especially the class of 2020, is, it has been, it's been awful. It's been heartbreaking to see the kids when they come back through to get their graduation caps and gowns. When we had a group of teachers. Um, when we had a group of teachers go out and deliver yard signs to all the seniors, that was an awesome day. Um, it was great for our staff to be able to see our students, but more importantly, for our seniors to know that we're thinking about them. We're very much appreciative about, um, with the community, um, and the way the city has been willing to hang the banners downtown, um, as well as our partnership with the Ottawa Police Department to get the flashing signs. Um, just to have a little message for our seniors to know, um, that everybody in this community is thinking about them and we're all rallying around them during this time. Um, and so, um, what I did is I asked my teachers for, um, to nominate students, some teachers leaders, and to be a part of a few committees that would, um, talk about aspects of graduation that meant a lot to them. I mean, so I had 25 students, um, that were nominated. I met with them on a series of, uh, different Zoom meetings. Not all 25 students showed, but every student at least gave me feedback, um, via email. I talked to a couple of them on the phone and then the majority of them did show up to the different Zoom meetings that I offered. Um, and the question that I asked the students was simply that, what aspects of graduation mean the most to you? Um, bar none, the number one response was walking across that stage. Um, the second response was ensuring that their family could be there. Um, and that one was really important to them because some of the students come from blended families. Some of the students have, um, grandparents and aunts and uncles that live in our community that we're very close with. Um, and so they were very worried about us limiting the number of, um, the number of students, family members that could be at an event. Um, and then the last thing they talked a little bit about was the atmosphere and those were the main three, um, components. Um, so we took that information, um, threw out some ideas, um, to the students, knowing that, um, this decision is really a moving target. Uh, we are at the mercy of Governor Kelly as well as the Franklin County Health Department, um, as far as what we are going to be able to do for graduation. Um, some internal things that went into this decision, we have a number of students that are not only leaving for the military, um, but we also have some students that have some union commitments. Um, and some parents had contacted us to let us know when those commitments start as well as when those ship dates, um, are. Um, I had Mrs. Starb call our recruiter that comes to our high school a lot. Um, and he has told us that right now ship dates for the military have not changed through the COVID pandemic, um, that those have stayed pretty consistent. Um, and that kids are getting shipped out on time and the, the plan is, um, right now, is the information he gave us. Um, and so we wanted to come up with something that would allow us to honor all of our students, um, without excluding, um, any of our students for whatever that reason might be. Um, and so what we kind of came to, um, tonight after, um, meeting with the students and coming up with some ideas is an, um, an idea of a mobile graduation. Um, and what that would look like is our students would, um, each student would have two cars, a vehicles full of family members that they would be allowed, um, to come with. Um, students and parents would, um, kind of come down all of the streets. Um, you can see the map that Dean, um, has projected and students would work their way around the building. We would, our thought is to have our teachers socially distant lining the sidewalks, um, along that area. Um, not only the high school students, but we would want our teachers, but we would want to open that up to all of our teachers in our district to give them that opportunity, um, to celebrate, um, our students and all their success and whatever role it was that they played, um, in their lives. And so they would be there cheering the students on as they approached that middle part by the cyclone room where it says a stage. We would actually have a stage set up, um, the board members. We would, um, hope that all of you would join us and be there, um, for the occasion and we would make sure everyone is socially distant, um, kind of in that area. Student would get out of their vehicle, um, parents, the family could come out of the vehicle as well. They would be there on the curb watching their son, daughter, grandson, niece or nephew or friend, uh, walk across the stage, pick up their diploma cover. Um, we would still plan to do the pictures. Traditionally, um, Ottawa High School has always taken a picture of the graduate as they get off the stage. We would still, um, do that. We also have talked with COFO about being there, um, to kind of work on the atmosphere, um, of the day. Um, and then we've also had conversations with Dean, um, in the tech department about live streaming this event. So if there's any family members who aren't unable to be there, um, don't feel safe or comfortable, um, being out because of COVID-19, that they would still have the opportunity to witness, um, the event. Um, after the student gets their picture taken, they would get back in the car, drive around, um, towards the end of the Performing Arts Center and we would have our counselors there with their packets that they traditionally would pick up in the cyclone room, um, as well as their diplomas. Um, the other thing today I've been contacted by, I would say a handful of students, um, and a couple of parents, um, that, um, with another idea of what would it look like, um, if we did this to ensure that we could include all of our students? But what would it look like if we could do something later? Um, if, uh, I guess the pandemic situation allows us to have a more professional ceremony later, um, in the summer, in July or in August? And so I would just, I guess, am I forgetting anything or?
I, I think we, we need to remember a couple of things. Um, one, the governor's phasing plan is going to, it's going to be the, the, the determining factor in what, what we can do this. If you haven't heard, there have already been graduation ceremonies in our area that have been, um, that have been revoked by the, by the government. Um, and, and we saw some within a 10-mile radius of us, uh, when they were told, no, you can't do graduation right now. So none, none of this can happen until we get to at least phase two of, of the governor's plan. And my understanding of the governor's plan is that in order to move from phase one to phase two, that you would have to have 15 or 14 days of a declination in positive tests. Uh, I don't think that we've had any of those things as of yet, as I think we saw an increase in positive tests yesterday. Um, so that, that calendar gets reset. So the, the date that we have for June 6th is, is certainly a moving target. We set it there because we have a number of students, um, who, who would not be able to participate the week following that or any weeks beyond that as, as they're either, um, dealing with military issues or dealing with other issues. And so our, our intent was to try to provide a, a celebration of our students' successes while still identifying, to identify every student within the, within the group. 180 graduates is basically what we're looking at. We would look at, at process, um, having two different groups, a 10 to 12 group with a two-hour time span that we can deal with, with, um, lag, because that's going to happen as we get parents in and out of cars and, and those types of things. Um, and then knowing that the, the M through Z group or whatever it would happen to be, would start from two to four and, and we could keep, um, the city from having to deal with a, a huge backlog of, of cars, uh, parked on the street and, and waiting in line. Uh, but what, what Mrs. Whitaker was indicating is that if, if, if what, uh, this district seems or deems as important is to, is to maintain a, a formal graduation ceremony as we have always done, there's no reason as to why we can't continue to do those things. But the purpose of this is to make sure that all of our students are able to participate in that celebration and that we can find a, a means to help parents and grandparents and friends be a part of this with two cars apiece to fill as many people in those two cars as they want to, to get out of the car when the student crosses the stage and be, um, socially distant from one another and celebrate their student successes. And then if we need to come back in July or August with something different, we certainly have that opportunity to do so. I would caution everybody to, to, to not just believe that the governor's plan is going to work as nicely as they want it to and that we'll be able to do these things without issue. And we can just set dates and, and know that they're not fluid and that, that, um, because we said we were going to do it on June 6th, that we'll be able to do it on June 6th. There's a real possibility that just like, again, local institutions, we're told that they can't have their graduations last weekend or this weekend, that we will be told, uh, that we're not able to do graduation ceremonies on June 6th either. Or even into June or July or whatever it happens to be. Those things are out of our control and up in the air. But the opportunity to do this before we see the movement of our students is really what we're trying to accomplish.
Um, Mrs. Whitaker, thank you so much for coming and, and sharing that with us tonight. One of the things that, um, I, I love about the way you work is, is you don't go in and just say this is what we're gonna do. You get the students involved and, and really care about what they want and, and what's important to them. And I think that's so important as we're trying to help them and, and all families get through this time of what's going on. Um, and I, I think it's great that you have, you know, a plan to get everyone celebrated and then if folks want a, a traditional celebration later and that's possible, there's no reason why that can't be done as well. I think you certainly have the best of both worlds here. So thank you for that.
I, I was going to say, I have been contacted by quite a few people today regarding this, um, all asking that why we're rushing and asking to hold off. And, and they kept saying how we stated in the 19 March meeting that we would do the July or early August. Um, but another thing that, another question I had was, um, did you consider like putting out a Survey Monkey or including all the seniors so they all could vote on some options or so they could feel they were a part or something like that?
Um, we didn't. I asked the students that were in the committees. Um, I gave them some questions and asked them to kind of go out and talk with, uh, their friends, to email their classmates, um, and to talk amongst our clubs and activities. I've still been meeting virtually. Um, so I know several of them had conversations within those meetings, um, with some of their classmates. Um, but we didn't send out anything, um, to the whole, um, student body, um, about the, kind of to get some feedback from there. So we, we did not do that, but we asked the students to kind of be that voice. I mean, try to build some capacity with their leadership, um, to go out and do some of those things.
And, and to address the other aspect of that in terms of why we would, uh, I think the term that you used was rush and not wait.
And again, those weren't my words. Those were words.
Is, is to make sure that we can, we can celebrate all of our students. Um, and, and this was the timeframe in which we could do so, which if the governor's plan remains intact, would still allow us to congregate in that capacity, I think of people up to 30, um, so, so we could, we could make this plan work. Um, and still identify our students before they move off to do, um, the adult part of their life, which is coming very quickly. And, and once we know that that adult part happens, coming back to celebrate these things, um, is more difficult. So making sure that we could do so was the, was the prominent piece in determining this plan. And again, it doesn't mean that we, that we haven't thought about a more formal ceremony if the opportunity arises. Um, but again, as that, as that date gets further and further away from the normal graduation date, the more difficult it will be to gather all of those students, uh, for that celebration.
And I know too, Melidia, the conversations I've had with parents, um, today was the only day I've been contacted, uh, by a few parents. Um, and part of it is that we try to put our shoes in, uh, I guess ourselves in the shoes of all of our families. Um, and I don't know, um, that any of us could look at any family, um, and say that, hey, we're not going to at least try to have an event, um, that would include your student because all of our students have worked very hard, um, for the last 18 years. This is a big milestone. Um, it's a very important event. I think that's why every school district around the country, around the state of Kansas, is holding on to that high school graduation. Um, and we want to make sure that we do our best to provide that opportunity for all of our students. Um, like Dr. Cobb said, it is a moving target and this might be an okay plan, but we may not be able to go forward if we don't get into, um, phase three. Governor Kelly has, um, given us a directive that no graduations can occur, um, during phase one and two. Um, and so that kind of gives, makes things a little bit more challenging, uh, when you are trying to plan, um, and do events. This is a lot more complicated, um, than what I would tell you a traditional graduation would be. We've done that. I've done it for a year. I know Dr. Cobb's has been a part of that for many years. A lot of the board members have been here with your children, um, or just as members of the school board. And so, um, coming up with this little bit more complicated, uh, process, we felt like was good to involve all of our students. And like we said, if we can come back and do a traditional graduation, if things allow later on this summer, um, there's no reason that can't be an option.
This was the first.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
This was the first I've heard about union students, so I'm not sure what, what that is.
Yeah, I came up today. We had, we have some students who've signed contracts with unions up in Topeka, some in Manhattan, um, and they are, they have a date that they need to start and it's in mid-June. And what their parents are telling us is once they get going, and I don't know, Chris might know maybe a little bit more, it's kind of full board, seven days a week. Um, and they get in there and they get going and they really can't ask for a day off because they could lose their position. Does that make sense, Chris, me kind of articulating it that way?
Yes, you're, you're on track.
Okay. And so we had that, some of the parents brought that to my attention today, that that is a commitment that their students, um, um, have and they were thankful that we were looking at a date a little bit earlier in June from their perspective because of that.
That's when, like, when you sign up for these apprenticeships, different trades and stuff, uh, you have to go off to school, probably just like the police academy and some of those you get sent off for that when you sign up.
Right. So.
Harold, did you? Oh, I'm sorry, Melidia. I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
No. Uh, is that a lot of students? I know the military, Ryan said there were five students. I didn't know if that's a lot of other students or if we could have just a, a drive-through type ceremony or something for the, the ones that were leaving for the military and hold off a little bit to wait to see? I know the phase out date for the governor right now is June 15th. And if we could see about just holding off a, a little bit for the others?
It's less than 10 students, um, that I'm aware of at this time. Like I said, I found out some more information through, through communication with some parents. Um, and I, I, I just think that the, the hardest part about that is, um, is looking at those parents and telling them that their students don't deserve, um, a, a chance to walk across the stage with the best atmosphere that we can create with a live stream and having COFO there and all the teachers lined up on the sidewalk. We could do that at a smaller scale for those students, but I just don't think it would be the same, um, as it's going to be on that day with all the students being there in their shifts and all celebrating together. And I would imagine people are going to be in the streets and doing all sorts of things to celebrate these students. And so, uh, we really, the idea was to try to keep the class together and allow that situation to happen and then look at a, a different, more formal graduation later on in the summer. I also don't want to put us in a situation where we hold off on something later in the summer because like Dr. Cobb's has said, we don't know what it's going to be. Um, and I would hate to get our, get in a situation, uh, where we're scrambling at the end and we don't have a great plan to honor all of our students, those that have, um, commitments early in June as well as our students that are maybe going off to college or doing other things that happened.
And I, I know you all don't want to hear this from the healthcare person in the group, but I'm afraid that we will have our second wave.
Yeah. Well, and, and Susan, I think that's exactly why we're talking about this now, right? So, um, I don't know that, that any of us, uh, believe that, that we're going to be able to gather in large groups anytime soon. Um, and again, what, what Melidia was talking about and doing something specific for those kids flies in the face of the concerns that parents are bringing in now about doing this process, that they want something specific for their kids, but not involving all of kid, all kids in that process, is in essence telling those parents that their needs and desires would want as important as everybody else's. So when we started looking at this plan, it was, it was about doing something holistically for our group, making sure that we can provide access to celebration to the, to the parents and, and friends, family that can fit into a, into a car, still meet CDC guidelines and the guidelines identified by the governor in terms of how we can gather at that point in time and celebrate the successes of our kids, knowing that the future in, in terms of how we can do this down the road is very uncertain. And the, the sad reality of it is, is that there may not be a time for us to do anything else. Um, when, when we really get to it, if we're not hosting athletic events and we're not, and, and sports programs get canceled and those types of things, then I have a hard time believing that if we can't do that, they're going to let us have 3,000 people gather for graduation. So again, further we move away from this, from the, from the normal date of graduation, the more difficult it's going to be for us to do some of these things. It's not about trying to rush to get something done. It's about making sure that we can celebrate all of our students in a type of ceremony that, that is different than anything that they've ever done. And if the window's open for us to do something more formal like we, like we've done in the past, that we provide that opportunity for anybody still around that, that desires to be a part of it. But at least all of our students would have the opportunity to be celebrated in this particular, in this particular situation, should the plan allow us to do so on June 6th.
Harold, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so it's interesting. Um, I, I didn't know the plan, but I heard a lot about it today from everybody that was an expert. So thank you, Mrs. Whitaker, for, um, rolling it out. You know, sometimes I think people think the board knows, uh, all the inner details and, and I thought it was interesting to hear all the various, uh, comments that we were getting today. Um, I will say I'm more comfortable with the plan now that I've heard it than I probably was coming. was coming into the meeting. I think I was pretty concerned about it. I certainly agree that all students need to be celebrated. So whether you're going off to military, you're going to K-State to work for union, I can't think of a greater two places, either military or K-State, to go to. I just want to go directly. Okay. I also think that it's very important. I actually, we've been on the road all day today. So I, I'm actually stopped at a truck stop and got out and just timed what I thought it would take. I think it's very important that we have a gap between the two, because I think it's very important that we don't rush that student going across the stage. If what we're saying is the very number one important thing for our students and, and their families is that we take that moment in time where the pictures are taken on stage, I think that's what we all remember. I don't really remember getting on the stage. I don't remember falling off the stage, which I didn't, by the way. But anyway, but I do remember that moment on the stage. So I think it's very important that that's what we're going to do, that we're going to capture that moment in time. Okay. And we, we don't rush families to a, a point, you know, I think that it's optimistic to think we're going to spend one or two minutes a family. I think it's going to be more like three or four. So bring a big glass of iced tea or something, board, because I think we'll be there for a while. My last thing is, is that when I vote yes tonight, I'm going to vote yes on two things. I'm, I'm, I'm going to make it very blunt, that I think we ought to plan for an event in July and have a more traditional, if we're allowed to. And I think it's one of those things that, you know, I understand the need to do it now, probably more than I've ever understood it. So if we're doing it now, then I think it's important that we send that same message we said a couple months ago. Because a couple of months ago, we made a statement as a board that yes, we were counseling prom, but yes, we were going to have graduation even if it went into July, even if it went into August. And I want to go on record that I'm 100% for that. Yes, I understand the government, the governor may not allow us. Yes, we may not be able to do it. But if there's any way, shape, or form that in July, we can hold a function that resembles more like graduation, that we as a board make the statement that we'll do it, whatever it takes. But I do agree with you, Mrs. Whitaker, that it's important to celebrate those students, all students now. And I think it's also in case we can't ever do anything else, right? I think it's very important that we do something. So anyway, I appreciate it being a robust day. I appreciate it being a lot more than just, oh, drive up and we'll throw your diploma through the window. You know, I heard somebody call today and go, you mean, I'm just pulling up and throwing the diploma through the window. And I don't think that's what they have in mind. But anyway, with that being said, I think it's important that this board says, if we can hold an event in July, we'll hold an event in July. We can't answer that today, I know that. But those are my thoughts.
Harold, I think it's even more important for us to say not just July, but August as well.
That, true, very true.
But Mrs. Whitaker, I'd also like to thank the committee for all the work that you've done. I know a lot of thought's gone into it. And I know that the kids have gathered lots of opinions from their friends. And I think it's important that we recognize the work that they've done.
Absolutely. They were talking conversation for even the kids to have, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. One, I agree with Susan. I live with one of those medical people that she knows very well. And I, from what I'm learning from her, I think us trying to gather a large group is going to be highly difficult. Mrs. Whitaker, I want to say thank you to you first. High and low today, there is no Cliff Notes for us on how to do this. There's no Cliff Notes for idiots on how to do graduation during a pandemic. So not that it's funny, it's, I don't know how we would ever try to make every single person happy and inclusive. It's a, a deck of cards we all got dealt, and we're trying to make the best of it. And I, I will say something, Mrs. Whitaker, I watched you last year go out of your way to make sure a certain student was there to walk that day. So I know you did not take any of this lightly, and I tip my hat to you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And I would just like to just make sure that Dr. Cobb's had said that what I had said flies in the face of those people in the union and the military. I am a military spouse, and I would never have something to recommend something to fly in the face of students who are leaving for boot camp. That is not at all what I was trying to say. I was trying to come up with solutions for all the situations. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
All right, Mrs. Whitaker, thank you for that great information. Board, this is not an item that was for voting. So I'm sorry, Harold, you don't get to, to vote on this, but you are in a position clear, so that's all right.
Very loud and clear, absolutely.
Yeah. Julie, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
If, you know, Lord willing, we get to go ahead and do the sixth. If we get to celebrate again, that's perfectly fine with me, because my heart breaks for this class and all the lasts that they haven't gotten to have. So if we, if and when we can celebrate twice, that ain't so bad. They deserve it.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you, Mrs. Whitaker, for that information. Board, we are getting ready to go into the next section of summer school, but we've been sitting for a couple hours. Does anyone need a five-minute break to stretch or anything? Are we good to continue?
I'm okay.
We're good? Everybody good? Thumbs up if we're okay? Yes, yes. Okay, all right.
I may still stretch if it's okay.
So, okay, well, let's move on to summer school then. Dr. Cobb?
How about if we just put everybody one comment each and boot camp?
I'll ask Amy to join me just in case questions come. But we were given the green light to tentatively from KSD begin to think about how we want to do summer school. And again, much of it depends upon the governor's edict in terms of how we are able to bring kids in. So currently, we can't do anything. Buildings are closed through May 30th. We couldn't do anything until June if we wanted to. But even in June, I think we're dealing with some teacher fatigue. I think we're still going to deal with a great deal of parent trepidation and bringing their kids back to a, a closed system. And I think that there, there's a great deal that we need to plan and prepare for in terms of a more robust summer school program. So you heard in the, in the update, if you read it, that this would be different than a typical summer school session. We'd be looking at two different groups at each grade level, K through five, at each of the elementaries, and then our typical middle school and high school summer school program that is a, a virtual-based platform. But this would, this would, this would garner instruction for about 25% of our students. They would be students who would, at the elementary level, they'd be students who would, who would be identified as ones that would possibly need to get back into more of a social setting, or students that need some help with specific skills, or students that we, we need to begin to prepare for the, the following year, if, if we're able to attend in a, in a more normal setting. But, so the idea would be that we would start July 6th. We would go through the end of July, I think it's through July 30th is, is the last day. Monday through Thursday, no school on Friday, and two-hour sessions at a time, eight to 10, 10 to 12. Each of those classrooms, so if, if there were one teacher, if Mrs. Bybee were the first grade teacher at Garfield, then we would put no more than eight students in her section. That would give us some latitude to have any additional supports come into the classroom and still meet CDC guidelines for 10 or less. We would also use a secondary classroom for the 10 to 12 sessions, so that whatever's going on in that classroom is not being, we'll use the word contaminated by, by any other students, and that, that group remains stable in their environments. That's a big piece of what the governor has indicated in terms of, of how we can use small groups at this point, is that those groups need to be, they need to maintain a stable environment, which means it's the same kids, meeting the same teacher every day, and you can't mix and match your 10 kids. So as we go through this process, that is the plan for summer school. Again, it's a much more robust program than we've had in the past. Our summer school programs typically start in July. Anyways, Linda probably remembers when we did a June summer school, and then in July, they'd forget everything they learned in summer school. We still follow that summer slide. So we pushed, we pushed it back to July. We have a fairly early start to the school year this year. So there's really about a week that they would have away from school before we start into, into the next processes again. But is there any question about summer school that the board has and the plan that we, that we have in place?
No, I read the update, and I thought it sounded great.
Good. It will be, it will be robust, and it will be a lot of kids. And I think that there is a certain faction of our parents that are really ready to get their kids back in, that type of thing. I think that there is another faction that is very much, no, we're not doing it yet. So we'll, we'll have to be very cognizant about how we address the needs of each of those families and what we want to do. But, but we have to have a date set so that we can start planning and start working with teachers, and, and certainly the supplemental contracts that will go with, with their current contracts to make sure that we can fill a summer school program the way we've envisioned.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Let's move on to driver's education.
All right, driver's ed. And we're going to bring Kelly back up here for driver's ed. So driver's ed is going to be very, very different. Typically, we would start driver's ed June 1st, and they would have a lot of classroom time, and then they would be driving shortly after, right? And, and we would have several months to get our kids through. Again, we've basically been told that we can't put kids in a car, and we can't have the volume of students in a classroom to meet the needs of driver's ed. We're going to see 60 kids this year is what we're going to, typically, we see a lot more than that. But we've limited that space because that is what Mr. Schaefer indicated to us, that he could do so, he could get kids through the driving piece in about a month of time. So 60 kids is what we made our cutoff. That was almost exactly the number of students who pre-enrolled. So it was really easy to determine who was going to be in and who wasn't, as that pre-enrollment process had already started before we, before we shut down. We had about 60 kids that had pre-enrolled, and those 60 kids will be reaching out to, to make sure that they can meet the requirements. The requirements will be that in June, June 15th through the, through the end of, of June, which is 26th, they will have to do an online classroom. This is not a virtual program. We didn't purchase a program. This will be Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Laws actually teaching the class in a virtual environment. So they will either do Zoom classrooms or Google Hangout classrooms, however they're going to, to choose to do it. But they will actually be having class, going over the PowerPoints, just like they would if those students were in the classroom with the teacher. But they may be doing it remotely, but it will be a true learning environment for them. And we have things in place to make sure that both of our teachers are capable of doing so. But every student who, who enrolls is going to have to make sure that they have access to internet at home, and will have to verify that they can meet all of the obligations of the course in that capacity. Otherwise, we're fairly positive that there's no way that we can teach the course. So once we're done with, with that aspect, and we've gotten a lot of people that have told us, we got to have driver's ed, because they got that 14-year-old kid that they don't want to take to school anymore, right? They're, they're ready for that kid to drive themselves and siblings and whoever it happens to be. So when we get to the end of the coursework on July 1st, everybody's going to have to come in and take their assessment. The assessment has to be done in person. So we will stagger those times to get kids in, again, meeting all the guidelines, depending on what the governor's plan is at the time, and make sure that we can get every one of those kids to take that assessment, pass it, and then have them available to start driving. They would start driving on July 6th. Mr. Schaefer has indicated to us that he can get two groups through the driving session, one from Ju-, July 6th to like July 17th or 18th, and then July 19th on into August 5th. So I think two weeks of time in terms of driving to get them through the process to get their, to get their permits. And then if we, if we're still not done, if we have kids that are, that are, haven't met the requirements at that point in time, Mr. Laws has indicated to us that he would continue to drive into the fall to get all of those kids through. So we have a plan for summer school. It's a much better plan than canceling summer school altogether. We should be at least able to get 60 some odd kids their permits this year, which is an incredible piece of, of a young person's life, right? The first time they get that driver's license, they get to start driving. It's important for us to be able to recognize that through the school system. So that is our plan for driver's ed. We will start launching tomorrow if there are no questions or concerns from our board.
I have one of those 14-year-olds.
It's important. It's important.
She'll be 14 on Friday, and she is ready.
Yes.
Your parents know that this is obviously all contingent upon where we are come June and July 1st and all things.
Again, much like graduation, summer school, driver's ed, and even athletics, as we talk about it, I'm contingent upon that phasing plan, working through and allowing us to do some, some groups and gatherings. So if not, then we'll have to, we'll have to go in and make some changes. Our board will be the first to know about this.
Well, thanks to Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Laws for working to make this program work for the summer. That's great. They, they do great stuff for us in the summer with that driving program, for sure. Let's move on to summer athletics.
All right. So this is going to be one that I'm sure will be, will be talked about. Occasionally, it came out and made a statement that if boards were okay with it, that they could start doing some things June 1st, as long as they met CDC guidelines. So the, the things that they didn't indicate in there, in terms of lifting and, and, and having practices and scrimmages and those types of things, is that it's awfully difficult to have basketball practice spaced six feet apart from one another. And it's awfully difficult to have football seven-on-seven drills spaced six foot apart from one another. So there's a lot still at play here, and, and there's, we all sit down as administrators to identify that one of the things that we didn't think was appropriate for our district was to indicate to anybody that athletics were taking a front seat to where we're at with academics. And our academic stuff didn't start until July, and subsequently, we didn't think it was very plausible for our athletic stuff to start until our academics were going. So there was a, a great deal of conversation about how this would work and what we wanted to do, and in part, making sure that we had everything ready for our programs to, to begin. But in the end, what it came down to was that we thought July 6th was really that start date for everything for us. It gave us all of June to make sure that we had preparations, that our buildings were clean, summer cleaning, that everything had been disinfected, ready to go. We had teachers in place, everything that we needed in order to be successful in all of these programs, and that that was the time then our athletic program should start. It gives them plenty of time to begin preparation for conditioning and so on and so forth. It doesn't necessarily put them behind the eight ball, even though if you were to ask any coach, they should have started practicing a year ago for, for the next season. And that's just, that's just the way that it works. But that is the plan for summer athletics. It's the, it's the expectation that we have, that academics always comes first in our district, and we want to make sure that we have our academics ready to go and in place before we, before we start with the, with the athletic side of, of what we need to accomplish. And first and foremost, we want to make sure that our kids are safe. We still don't know the ins and outs of everything that's happening, nor do we know that we can keep them safe in the environment that we currently have. Certainly, the governor is leery of that as well, as, as she's not ready to, to open those things up to large groups of, of students either for buildings. So in, in our mind, this was the, the best of both worlds to give our athletic programs a date in which they know they could start, start working with kids if they wanted to do that conditioning piece on their own, and to make sure that we have our academics in place to be successful moving down the road. Questions, thoughts, comments on, on summer athletics?
Okay, then let's move on to lunch, summer lunch.
The last thing is the lunch program. So many of you know that we've been providing lunch for a lot of kids. We saw a time when that, when that number was escalating very quickly, almost exponentially. We went from like 460 to 500 to 700, up to 1,200 meals for both breakfast and lunch, 2,400 meals total daily. So we have seen that number decline in, in, in recent weeks. And so we're not serving near that many meals as we did before. So we start when school is out, last day on Thursday. Starting, I think, on Friday, there is a new form going out indicating that if parents want to continue that lunch program through June 30th, that they need to indicate to us that they're, they're intending to do so. That we're not continuing to make 2,400 meals a day for people that are not going to take the meals. So that, that form is out. It's, it's out there. We're, we're beginning to get people to respond to it now. The, the bigger question that we will still have to have is that the USDA has not made a decision yet upon a waiver has not made a decision yet upon a waiver to continue the summer lunch program as we have been utilizing it. Right? And that means that it's a waiver for all persons to eat for free, regardless of whether you qualify for free and reduced or even regardless if you're a student in our district, as long as you are a particular age living in our school district. Right? So if that waiver goes away, June 30th would be our last date. We've started working with ECAN to provide their summer lunch program as they typically would, which again, would only impact students who are identified as free and reduced and it would have to be a congregational meal. Those students would have to go to a place to eat the meal there. That's the way the summer lunch program works in the way that they provided. The only way that we can get away with that now is the waiver is currently in place for the type of meal program that we're currently offering. So we're hopeful that that will continue over the summer. I know that I've been in contact with Cheryl Johnson at KSDE to try to determine whether or not they're going to do so. They were supposed to make a decision around the beginning of May. That hasn't happened yet, which typically indicates to me that there is still a great deal of discussion going on, which would also indicate to me that maybe it's not going to happen. But as we continue to see testing increase across the state of Kansas and positive test increase across the state of Kansas, hopefully, we will get some relief from USDA to continue to provide those services through the remainder of the summer. But that is what's going on with lunch. Just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of where we're at with that and how we're planning to move forward with ECAN should the waiver not be continued. Right. And just so you know, if you haven't heard, the waiver to not have to have your kids with you anymore has been passed. So, you know, before they had to show up with their kids or we had to see the kids at the house if we were delivering meals. We don't have to do that anymore. They can just simply say, I've got four kids at Garfield. I need four meals. Good stuff.
Did we, the last time we discussed the lunches, you stated that we hadn't gotten the payment, I forget how you phrase it, reimbursement or whatever, that, did we ever?
And it came out well, so, yeah.
Okay, I just wondered.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cobb's, for that update. Any other questions for Dr. Cobb's on lunches?
I think it's great that we can do it.
It really is a positive for our community. Absolutely, yes.
All right, well, we're going to move down to section seven. We've all been presented a personnel report. Is there a motion to approve such, said report?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie D'Andrio, yes. Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Shanda Olmsen?
Yes.
Susan Ward? Susan, are you voting yet? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I still was muted.
That's okay. And Harold Winger?
Yes.
All right, and that passes 7-0. We are down to announcements. Dr. Cobb's?
Hey, we've been here a long time and most of what we would want to announce, we just had a conversation about. But I think that there is a couple of things that we want to address. One is the last week of school and our teachers and our staff have put in a ton of work here in the last seven weeks to try to make the most out of a poor situation. And if you see one of our teachers, thank them for all that they've done. Congratulate them on a great school year and hopefully, they have some time over the summer to recharge those batteries. But we will have a Zoom end of the year meeting to recognize some of the awards that our teachers have earned over the course of the year. This will be different than our normal end of the year cookout type of a thing that we do. If you remember, last year, we had a big Kris Kake celebration. But certainly, gathering guidelines are not going to let us do so. So we're going to do something via Zoom and see how much fun we can have with trying to deal with 250 faces on a screen as we recognize. It might be difficult. But the very last thing, and I hope that our friend Hannah Ray is out there watching this night. And if you didn't see it, Hannah was recognized by Michelle Obama on her Twitter page the other day for being an incredible teacher. And it had something to do, I think she told us today, with her hashtag digital learning statement. It's an incredible opportunity. It's certainly incredible that somebody like Michelle Obama recognizes what's going on here in USD 290 and how great our staff is. So congratulations to Hannah. I know that she was very excited about it and I think somewhat flabbergasted about it and has been dealing with with the recognition of that that she's getting. So congratulations to Hannah. We love her. We love that she's an OHS grad and coming back to work for us. It means a great deal to us. Congratulations to her and that's all we have for announcements.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.
Have a great night, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Good night.